Okay. It is six thirty, I think we'll get started. So Joy, you have. Chris, John, Craig and I here in the room. Frank, Brad and Joe are on Zoom. Uh, so we have. Everybody. Um, alright, so we have a quorum, that's good. Public comment period, so we have a public comment period for items that are not on the agenda. Looking in the room, I don't see anybody in the room that is not associated with one of the projects we're discussing. Does anybody have anything not on the agenda that they want to mention? Anybody on? Zoom? No. Not hearing anything, we'll move on, twelve eighty Dryden Road.
For some planning board meeting.
Four three.
Yeah.
There was a comment from Gina. Which I think went to these folks saying that the materials that they sent. Were after the typical deadline for considering them and they might not be given full consideration, am I? Is that going to happen or are we going to attempt to consider the documents and do the seeker?
I think we had stuff come in. Yesterday. Yesterday, yep, yeah. Um, well, we had some documents before, I mean, we, I think it's probably worthwhile to just see what we have and. Um, see if we have enough information or not. Uh, but yeah, it could very well be that, you know, if we, if. If the documents came in yesterday, because some of us probably haven't had a chance to read them.
Yeah, unfortunately, that, that week, moving the meeting up.
That's true of me, I haven't had a chance.
Um.
I, I think the documents look, look pretty good, but it'd be nice to have a little more time to look at them, look them over.
Then we want to go through the thirty questions in person?
Yeah, let, we can go through some of that.
That should be most of it anyway.
So I have a question, Ray, did, did you send out more today? Did you send out more ago?
The same documents.
So we put up on the web, because the website crashed today.
Yeah.
He, he, he did that for me because I was trying to pull stuff off the website for this meeting, your website's not working.
So it's all stuff that's previously. So I hope that doesn't cause more confusion, but yeah, we were. We were. We have a little issue with the town website. So, alright, so take us through what we've gotten so far. Do you want to start with the thirty questions there? Alright, so. We put the thirty questions up first, if you guys have it open, the site plan review. That's the document title.
Do you want to join the Zoom call, make sure your screen?
Speech here. Uh, sure. I did not join though.
So the town of Dryden, the site, and then the password is up on the wall there.
Where am I going to the meetings?
On the left side was the calendar.
Oh, does that's not working? Oh yeah, that's right. If you guys are pulled up on the site plan review, that's the document that pretty much has all thirty questions in it. Well, I think it was all thirty questions. The only thing that want to be in there is the um, uh, SW PPP. But that's just a separate document.
That was very helpful, by the way, that you annotated our list of items.
Yeah, that way we could just go back and forth, yeah. I figured that'd be the simplest way. So once it's up, I'll, once you guys are all looking at it, let me know.
I, I, I gotta find it. Like, it's the site plan review.
Yes, yeah, do you have it?
Number three, site plan review, okay, yeah, I'm looking at it.
You did it off the website, did you?
Me?
Yeah.
I got it um, off of maybe Gina's email.
You're not too late, come on in.
So since all of the references in the thirty questions are back to other documents, is that going to be shared, is that the idea? On the screen here?
Uh, they were saying that the website was down, so we, we can't share it, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get to it. All official now? Where is the line, is it just? We got too many emails about planning boards.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Those are twenty-one, what are we doing? Straight here, yeah.
While you're waiting it, get that up, we are, they have that, they have.
This is the property owner, by the way, David Moore, if you weren't aware. So we brought him along to answer any questions that maybe we don't have him, like the. Property lines, we finally got the documentation from the surveyor, so I think you guys have that, but we also brought it, so.
Riley, in your email inbox now, you have the link to the Zoom.
So this is the site plan review document? Hold on. Why is this not opening? Oh, what's wrong?
Progress.
So, be sure. Alright. Where's the? Somebody has it up that can share it, that's fine, I'm trying to open it, it's not opening for me. Don't know why. Okay, she's got a chair up there. Alright. Sorry, we're, we're good now. Alright. So most of the stuff is obviously on the site map as you see there, so, we can go through a bunch of them right off the bat. Let's start with the number one, so title of drawing. Is, it's all on there. Say man. Uh, boundaries of the property plotted to scale, so the, if you go down to page three. That's where the site map is, and then this is the actual boundaries, which is, I think, another attachment that we would have sent, but. We do actually have them, and they are pretty much right on the money, so, but you know.
The acreage matches now.
Yeah, the acreage matches, and we, our fences within our. Boundaries, so.
Actually, you own your fence.
Right, yeah, yeah, right, um. Well, the highways, yep, that's also in there, um, you can see both of them on the map. Is this the water push, the butt lions? Um, on the SW PPP, I think it's called U H E N S C plan. And that shows the water courses, it's just one stream right off the back of the driveway, which is kind of in our site plan, it's just not. Boy, um, it's detailed. Uh, drainage and drainage plan, that's in the engineer's map as well, that's that, uh, SW PPP. Are you screen sharing this? No, that's Gina, yep, she's got it. Locations on construction. On the outside of the building, on the. Uh, site map, it has all the dimensions. Parking loading areas, they're all on there with dimensions. Pedestrian access, so the pedestrian access. Uh, comes right down the driveway right next to the normal one we're gonna put, or the driveway access. We're gonna do a three foot section, and there's gonna be light poles that separate the two, so you're driving on one side, and it's both lit, so it just kind of makes sense. Facility facilities. Yep, we got bike racks. And the dumpster now, and we um, talked with David Sprout, and he approved the locations of both of those. And the first thing he came back with us on the fence was, he suggested a wooden fence, I remember we were going back and forth between chain link, wood and brush. Uh, fence, so I figured we could try and figure that out right now, what you guys like to see, he said wooden fence, we originally said wooden fence, I think that would look the best for privacy.
We're gonna do whatever you guys want to say.
Yeah, whatever you guys want, we just want to make sure we can. Get it figured out.
He thought wooden would be better, you guys wanted metal, why did he think it was better?
He thought for privacy, a couple of you guys brought up the point of, uh, you want it to be more residential area. So you wanted to hide more parking, even though that's like all commercial right there, but it. Since our parking lot is the only one shown from thirteen, it would hide the cars, if you didn't want to see them.
I think there was concern in the parking lot headlights going out on Route.
Yeah, so, a nice wooden fence would stop all that.
It won't be eight feet though.
Six feet, right?
I mean, there's fixes.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, I think we, we lowered it down in the plan, I think it says six foot fence, yep.
And no, no mural on the back.
Yep, that's fine.
Just let it be gray or something.
Yeah, we'll play a nice neutral color.
Your site drawing showed your company name kind of all across.
Yeah, that was the only render we had, our one guy just said, hey, here's what a couple of different wooden fence looks like, and it just had upstate haze, and. We weren't sure about the mural yet, so we just kind of left it to see, you guys could see what it looked like if.
So you're not planning to put your company name?
No. We weren't even sure if you wanted the wooden or metal, so we just kind of put on what we had.
I think, I, I mean, wood makes sense, because the headlights going out on Route thirteen makes a lot of sense. Uh, I think wooden's fine. Uh, I, it's just, you know, the, coming down through there, we don't want it to be, well, you know, really shouldn't be a billboard, right, so it's.
Right, right, yeah, we can leave it, we can leave it, like, we got, you know, signage on the building as you see in the bottom of the attachment here.
Good question.
Gray or something, yeah. Yep. Brad?
Um, so on the, on the map, I see that there's a section, maybe the, the most public. Um, keyed as wooden fence, and the rest is all. Um, keyed as, as chain link, so are we talking about mostly chain link and just one section wooden, or doing it all wooden?
Correct, because uh, there's a lot of trees in woods where the chain link, you're not gonna see through it anyway from the road, so only the part. Be able to be seen from the road is gonna be wooden, so that black section.
So, okay, and then both of them, both material fence, materials will be a six foot height, is that right? Thanks.
Yep. Uh, where did we leave that? Uh, okay. Uh, where were we on the? Uh, sidewalks constructed continuously, yep, because they're gravel anyway.
Um, just call out the number as you go, so we're not just jumping around using words, that would be very helpful for me to follow your description.
Yep, so number eleven now, provisions for bike parking, we have the bike rack. Location by the building. Um, it's closer to the entrance we had on the other side before, so. Sprout told us put on this side, it's near the pedestrian access as well, so that made more sense. Uh, number twelve. Location type screen, uh, the dumpsters on the other side of the building, kind of away from the entrances, so hopefully no odors, and it's out of way of traffic. So when a dump truck does come in, it goes right around the one way, he's out of the way, he won't hinder any traffic during his unloading and loading. Um, Sprout also recommended that.
So I, I, I don't follow this, it said it, it's by the entrance, which to me is out.
No, I'll, I'll set the entrance.
It's away from the entrance.
Yep, the bike.
Yeah, which is fine, but then you wrote by the entrance there, so I was thinking, oh.
Um. We did. It's not.
Thank you. I have a, I'm sorry.
It's correct, that is wrong.
Okay.
Alright, so thirteen, um, improvements, so all the wood and chain link fences, so we'll do both now, we decided on. And all the drains right now are existing, and we're just, we're leaving. The only thing is when we lie in the driveway, there's some swales which I have pictures of, and we're just gonna extend those to the width of the driveway, keep them in the same orientation and material. Uh, method is sewage disposal municipal. Uh, fifteen. Secure. Potable water. Structure materials, municipal, no changes. Sixteen, location of fire emergency zones, location of fire hydrants, there are no fire hydrants down near our, um, building, so we'll just have. Ample fire extinguishers and wide in the driveway, we have plenty of room now for fire trucks to come in, you can put two down the lane. Uh, six, seventeen. Um, existing, no changes, we're not changing anything there, everything's there, uh. We might, we'd like to add solar at some point, but that's down the road. Eighteen, location high materials, sign, signages, so we have page five, all of our signages, and that has your. Heights, locations, we talked to clarity eye doctors, and where they have their sign, they said that's the closest to the road, you said you guys would allow, so we went across the driveway and back about six or eight feet. So we're no closer than they are, and we talked about heights and everything, we're not gonna block each other.
Yeah, there's no concern there, he was really, um, excited to have us get our sign up there, actually, so.
Yep.
We're not gonna be sharing the same sign anymore.
Yep. We're gonna put up our own, and then there's also gonna be a small one on our entrance driveway, so you can see where to go, a lot of people, I think, turn early into clarity. Uh, nineteen, street number, the number on the street and signage will be included on our signs, so. And we have it on the mailbox there right now. Twenty. Uh, buffer areas. Um, vegetation cover, that's just existing, we're not changing any of that. And we're just adding fences. Twenty-one, location, twenty-one. Uh, outdoor lighting facility, so we're just on the very, very last page, there's a lot, there's a light, they're just ground lights, solar, and they'll shine up towards the building, not towards the sky. And it'll be six in the front of the building, and then the driveway lighting will be the same, solar pointing down. Along the driveway and walking path.
And it would be helpful if you would add the post plate that you're planning to put along the driveway? To show a cut for that?
Uh, no, we're just gonna do the same.
We're just gonna do the same. The same light, the same little.
Just, we're gonna put a post up and put on the post and name it down instead of sticking it in the ground and shining it up.
Uh, along in the entrance road.
On the entrance, yeah.
Yeah, so that was a solar light?
Yep, solar lights.
Not gonna get much sunlight.
We're, we're taking out a lot of trees to widen the driveway, so all the pine coverage is gonna be gone.
On that.
On that side of the driveway, yep. Uh, where did I leave off, number twenty, twenty-two. Um, all of our LED lights are under three thousand Kelvin is, uh, required. Twenty-three, direction illumination, so like I said, on the front of the building, which there's actually a picture. On our upstate haze final set. Um, PDF, I think it was three attachments I sent, or Ray sent. Um, at the very bottom, there's a picture of how it would look signing up at the building.
Do you have a three D render of it?
There's, yeah, there's a page of the three D render.
Why don't you pull it up on the screen?
That's, she has it.
She's on it.
She's on it. I'll wait until she pulls it up and we'll go. Because I think the rest of it kind of goes to that anyway.
So you said the LED lighting's gonna be pointing at the building, not pointing up into the sky, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's gonna.
Yep, so just to light up the building, like, you've seen clarity how they have it up on the building, looks nice, yeah, pretty much mimic that.
Which one of these have it?
Uh, upstate haze final set. It's all caps.
Yeah, that had a lot of stuff in it we don't need, but it was good to see.
Yeah, well, it was good for when we're doing.
I mean, seeing, seeing the renderings and seeing how things place is good, but, but really, we don't get involved in what you do inside the building, that's the building code, people.
Yeah, we just.
We figured it'd be nice to add.
Can explain things a lot better, we can't.
Also, if you go all the way to the bottom, Gina, that'll show the lighting onto the building.
It was good to look at.
Really dark.
So it's a little better on your normal screens instead of the projector, yeah, that's pretty dim. Yeah, here's the. Alright, so twenty-four. Identification location.
And Brad has a stand up.
Uh, Brad?
Um, we, I, I just, I mean, I can ask now or I can wait till later, um, just had a question on handicap stuff.
Um, did we go through that yet, or is it no?
Well, it was on the list, and I, I was, I was hoping to address it, you know, in real time, but it's, I can wait.
Oh, we can address it real quick, on the, um, site map there, it's, um, the first two parking spaces, which is close.
I, 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 I'm sorry, I, I see that, um, the question was, um, I know that there was also something about sidewalk materials not being. You know, concrete or, or, or solid or. Uh, you know, being a more gravel, uh, material. And, um, with the, the handicap parking, the, I think that what should be indicated is next, next to, um. Uh, the stall next to the handicapped, uh, should be like a, either five, Dave or Shelley no best, five or eight foot loading and unloading zone. And then the, my other question on that was the location of the handicap parking, being, you know, a little ways away from the building. Oh, there's a type one existing building I just saw. Um. Um. Getting from, from the, uh, those parking, those handicap parking stalls to the front door. You know, wondering what that's gonna look like in the middle of winter. Um, and also just the material of the, of the parking area itself, and I'm just thinking about, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, place myself in a wheelchair. Thinking, how do, how do you get from there to A to B?
Our, um, entrance is on the east side of the building, the front of the building there that you're thinking is, is the entrance is the exit. With a little walkway.
Yep.
Side of the building is the entrance, so those are actually the closest ones to the entrance. And off of the building that, on that side, there is a concrete walkway existing. Uh, right by the number six on the map. There's what, five, four feet, no, it's.
Wide the whole width of the building, but it's about.
Okay, I'm, if we feel that the, uh, that that's. That, that's okay for handicap parking there. Um, I just, I'm just making some observations about it.
We could add an extra concrete if that's what you guys want to see, but.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, is, is it possible, and I mean, it's. I don't, this isn't really a scale drawing, so I don't know what the distance from the, the stalls in the aisle width to the building, et cetera. Is it possible to put the handicap parking against the building?
Um, not really.
Yeah. Um, the, the distance that you're looking for, and you're, you don't see in the drawing is.
Well, that's just, that's the scale thing that's throwing me off here, it looks like those, the parking is pretty far away from the building, but maybe it's not.
Any ADA parking will be about forty to fifty feet away from the building.
Yeah, that, that, I mean, that doesn't, that, then the scale is totally throwing me off, sorry.
Um.
Looks much further away from than forty feet.
I, I'm quick, kind of question in the same line, um. If we approve the site, um, it's still code required to have a dimensioned parking lot planned for the building permit, right?
What was it?
So for the design of the actual parking lot, it goes to get a building permit, they're gonna have to ask for dimensions on these spots, right? So. I agree with Brad, it's really kind of hard to tell what this.
Well, that should be for, that should be for a site plan approval as well, not just building.
I, yeah, I would agree, um. And we did ask about this last time.
Scale, I can't, I can't grasp the scale at all on this drawing, I'm sorry, it, otherwise, very nice renderings, but. The site plan is not telling me a lot.
Those distances were on their previous submitted, where they had the parking spaces, uh. There's a, um, key to all this, and it describes more measurements. Uh, before the image that Gina's on, the page above that, gives you a key and gives you a lot more measurements. For each number, that's why it's numbered on the site plan, you see the threes and the fours, and it, they all correspond to that was.
Yeah, that, that information is best put on to the drawing itself.
We just want to keep the drawing clean. So.
But it's, it's, it's right above it, so if you look at the reference number, you can see it has the information you're looking for, as far as the nine by twenty. The length of the driveway even, and a, a previous number before that. Like I said, that, the ADA parking, we will add that space that you're requesting for accessibility, and those parking spots will be. Very close to the building.
Mm-hmm.
They have a ramped entrance and exit, um. Both sides of the building, um. That hasn't been discussed yet, but I wanted to bring it up before it was asked, um, that'll meet all. You know, requirements as far as slope and quote, or code asked for. Okay, number. What was the last number we were on, really?
Um. There's also, there is a scale on there, the fifty foot, like, right below Gina's, um.
Yeah, there's.
It, it, it's very close to fifty foot from the entrance to the handicap, if you actually take your fingers and do it, it's, it's pretty close to scale. I would say with intolerance.
Is, is there a reason why you put them at the end and not? I mean, I know they take up more space.
Where you can add that. Um, ex, access, uh, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
Probably move them even closer down the row and have them open in the middle rather than at the end.
Right. We kind of did the end because, um, it make, whatever you pull in, they have more room, because you can't park next to them, so now you have all that room to get your. To unload, yeah. Accessible van door open and whatever ramps they need. That's why I put them on the end and not next to each other, you put them like that, so they have ample room.
Yeah.
So if we did move closer, they still have to be opposite.
Um, but yeah, we can use that next parking spot and just eat into that for that five by eight.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he was requesting, we'll, we'll amend that.
And I think we were on twenty-five. We were on twenty-five. Movement clearance, one existing vegetation. And just. So. Yeah, we're not, we're not doing anything with that, right, individual trees, yeah. That's just existing. No trees to be cleared, one twelve inches diameter, yeah. All the ones along the, uh, driveway I just said we're gonna clear, they're all small vines, they're all under twelve inches.
Yeah.
Uh, landscaping plan and.
But you're, you're only clearing what you need to make the driveway wider, which we need to do anyway.
Right, correct, yeah, and it just happens to be there, they're small trees, so nice and easy. Um, landscaping plan and planning schedule, we have a, um, we're using JD's lawn maintenance, I'm sure you've heard of him, he's doing our. Uh, summer, spring and winter.
There was a signed contract from him right here. That basically just breaks down the frequency.
It was the first contract he's ever made, he said.
So, um. You know, it's basically maintenance dates say as neat throughout the season, April first and November thirtieth, weekly visits. Two visits per week are expected when turf is excessively long in the spring. Um, that includes mowing and trimming, uh, weed whacking. Um, general cleanup, which is trash and, uh, anything from the turf and lot, landscape beds each visit. He'll weed the beds, um, and the stone beds, he'll prune the trees around the entrance. Um, and then he'll do spring and fall cleanup with leaves, um, hit snow plowing and shoveling. Uh, dates he anticipates are November fifteenth to April fifteenth, so that's all. Like I said, that's his first contract, so. He's taking care of it all.
Yep. Um. Record any application approval status, I think we provided a license last time, we have a full license for this, so we're good to go, we can provide again if needed. Um, identification, any state or county permits, that'd be, be you guys? Right? Number, number, uh, twenty-nine, twenty-nine. That'd be you guys, just. So, none? Right?
State firm?
Yeah, it says county, four county. I guess your town, yeah.
We're not.
I don't think we, I think that's.
Other.
Okay. Start, uh, the SW PPP, um, that's that. I don't know if you guys pulled it out. The, uh, third document we sent, it's U H E N S C plan. The uh third document we sent, it's U H E N S C plan, and that's that SW PPP. And Sprout was able to look at that and give a thumbs up. We had Andy.
How you say his last name?
Shabba.
Shabba. Andy Shabba did it. Uh U H E N S C plan.
Other question?
Go ahead, yep.
Um I'm I'm sorry, if I miss it, I apologize, um because I heard a mention of it sometime earlier in 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 the um. Discussion, but the. I'm just looking at one of the renderings that shows the the wood fence with upstate haze repeated on it is. What's the thought on that, was that discussed?
We're not gonna do that, yeah, we're not gonna do that.
It's gonna be a blank fence.
Okay, thank you.
Neutral color fence, yep.
Alright, thanks.
I pink.
John brought that up earlier.
Did we get that other document? Or the it was the one that just came. Just a stop, yep, there is the stormwater management, so we're gonna put down the silt logs, the uh stone check dams. And we have a stockpile area for any. Uh so. And uh along the south side is where you see that creek. And we'll just make sure nothing goes in there, and they even added the stabilized construction entrance, so gets all the stuff off our tires before entering the roadways. And that was the latest question. Uh full environmental is number thirty two, full environmental assessment form. Um those were submitted, I updated two of them, the environmental assessment form and the ground disturbance form with the correct parcel acreage, which is one point eight three. Think I had like one point two five last time, right, then we also addressed questions nine.
Thank you.
And we um we changed nine and eleven, the questions that you guys, we didn't answer number nine, and then we changed number eleven to a no. Instead of yeah. Right, that was the only changes.
Alright.
So we all think, do we have enough?
I think so.
I think.
So one's one concern with this is that the two thirty nine from the county hasn't run there at thirty day clock. So they still have opportunity to weigh in on this now. So what could happen tonight is to make sure all the planning board concerns are addressed, and then that would give. The applicant some confidence.
Right.
This board does.
And we see what comes back with the two thirty nine, and then we do a seeker. At the next meeting, whatever. Sorry, I try to get you out of here.
Well, if they if the county doesn't come back. Condition that they come back with nothing. Then we would have to vote on it.
Yeah, it's an unusual condition to put on.
Well, they're they're holding us up at this.
But yeah, 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 I agree. We we really gotta get going.
If you wanted to proceed that way.
I'm comfortable with that.
We could do the seeker for the condition that we have to wait for the two thirty nine, we're proving a contingent that the two thirty nine review comes back with with no.
What would they, what would the county, what would they want?
What what more could they ask for?
Yeah, we probably shouldn't wait them. It probably should wait, I hate the throes.
Yes, yes, it's not, it's not your fault, it's not ours, but just costing us a lot of money and revenue, not, you know, to get open.
So that's be understood that there is.
There there is some risk to the applicant, yeah.
Well, we 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 made a week earlier, that sounds like we'll probably get it.
When does the um?
And the talk would run out to that point.
Would run out.
The two thirty nine.
When did it go in?
Oh, yeah.
We probably should wait, sorry.
No contingencies to get anything sort of going like.
It doesn't. They got thirty days and they'll wait, they'll, I bet you won't see it until we meet again. They'll take that thirty days, bro.
They often do. You know, we could probably start review of the building permit application. And with some assurance that this is acceptable.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem.
I I mean, yeah, do we do we have everything we need?
Want a resolution setting, we're we accept this for.
But we can't do a site plan approval until we have the two thirty nine review. Can't do seeker until we have.
And you'd be able to proceed with your building permit application and get that review, because that's really the next stage for you that's creating a bottleneck right is doing that.
Yeah, we're we're trying to do everything we can to get open, it seems like. We're getting kicked back a month at a time. And it's, you know, like I said, very disappointing, there's a lot of revenue being lost, you know, hundreds, thousands of dollars. Yeah, I feel like our plan is pretty sufficient.
We're not the one told, yeah.
Figure out what we can and can't do.
Well, you can, you can get your building permit application and get that reviewed.
Yeah, start getting active in the works, yeah.
Yeah, you you've submitted everything that's required here, and we don't have a problem with it.
It's all good.
So the only the only thing we got to fence is gonna be neutral gray color, six twos.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come you guys with a color.
And you're gonna move and you're gonna move to accessible parking two one.
Make sure it's.
Two spaces with accessible.
When that's, we can send another email or something when it's time, but hey, this is where we.
No, that's just a condition.
Okay, perfect.
So you guys contracted lined up and mobilize the day after we do the final approval.
And I think what that means is.
Yeah, we they're chomping at the bit, yeah.
Assuming that comes back to not much, I think it would be pretty quick.
Tony, I have a question.
Standard conditions, something.
Brad?
So on the on the site plan, I'm seeing that there's the future thirty by one hundred pavilion slab. Um are we, do we know enough about that, or are we just kind of? Another another day.
What we talked last time was if they were thinking about doing in the future, they should get it on the site plan, because we can approve it all at the same time.
Yeah, yep.
Go up before the winter, we're not putting concrete down right now. So do you have questions about that?
Well, what's going on the slab, is it just a slab?
Uh yeah, well, there. We plan on having food trucks in that walking trails right there, we'd like to have, you know, some picnic tables out there, someone wants to sit out there, whatever. Um and then in the future, we're planning on doing, you know, special events there, so. You know, once we cross that, we can go through the proper applications of the things that we need to do as far as permits goes.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the use right now that the is receiving site plan is for retail business.
Right.
So and that use is allowed in that district, event spaces under the current zoning are not allowed in that district. So when you come back, if there is. Uh there's potential to do special events under an operating permit.
Yep, that's.
But that wouldn't be a a regular thing, you couldn't have like a regular Friday night concert series there.
Right, yeah, that's not the plan.
Okay. But yeah, we. So the use is yet to be approved through a zoning permit. But this site plan could include these future facilities, and that way you have proved it, you don't have to come back.
Exactly, as you talked about a gazebo and.
You have more pavilion like. Yeah.
Right. Yep.
Alright. And then access to the.
Correct, yeah, that's that locker will get in the bag.
Yeah, no, I think that's good.
Any other questions, Brad?
Yeah, thank you.
For Frank. I I I don't think so, no, thanks.
Alright.
Everybody happy with the F P A F or the S C A F part one?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see any problems.
Okay, so now other things to complete the application.
So we can start applying for that building permit then, right? Perfect.
Yep. Alright, thank you guys.
Have a good holiday.
Uh okay, uh twenty seven Dutcher.
Okay, so this is a uh Joe Tiff here is the applicant, he's doing a sponge and repair business out. Must do a small end repair business out of his home, coming before the town board for a special use permit. So this is a uh planning board making recommendations to the town board concerning that application.
And we've had these materials. Uh this is using. Uh there's really no changes to the site, right, because you're using an existing, you're using an existing garage.
Everything's just cluttered off by shrubbery, so I can't see much of the house anyways.
Parking?
Parking is just, you know, it's not a great big business, I'm not doing full blown retail, so it's not as popular as a retail store is. So I'm just using mainly the driveway, which is a hundred foot, I ex. Plan on expanding the driveway some, because I never filled in a lot where the. Garage one up, because it sits about four foot out of the grounds, and one half of it, so the level out to front yard. That even more than parking, actually, I got new anyways, but. Yeah, and to expand everything to more park. And that's basically the spring. I haven't been able to walk for, you know, seven months, so that's I didn't do much.
That area, lot sizes are fairly large. There's a fair distance between neighbors, what about broad noise and study anticipate, I mean, he's gonna be.
So. I mean, it's over two hundred foot to. One house on one side, across the road, you know, it's over two hundred foot too, so the other side, the properties. Class vice commercial property, what's just happening here.
And and it should be noted, this is an ag district with trucks going up and down the road all the time.
Yeah, it does, it gets quite loud.
Dutcher and Sims Hill get a lot of trucks.
They do, it's a shortcut between fall and root down.
Hey, Tony?
Yep.
Um so uh just a couple of things I noted on the uh S C A F, uh the area. It it said approximately ten to twelve acres, it looks like it's fourteen point six eight, does that sound about right?
No, it's it's about four, almost four acres, it's only three point something, the whole property is.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, I must have misread something, um.
This is three point seven one AC.
Oh, so.
The other twelve point twenty five, that was something to do with this state tax number, that's what that is.
Okay, interesting. The dot and the dash, right, so that that was one item, and thanks for correcting me, um the other one was the the. Number five on the page two, the the those first. Couple of uh questions on the zoning regulations and comp plan. Um they weren't answered, but that was that, was that gonna be answered uh tonight, or what's the plan there?
What was it?
Oh, it says, is the proposed action a permitted use under the zoning regulations and um. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, it's probably yes to both, but they aren't checked, no boxes are checked, that's all. So. Check them if they're if they're yeses, so we, it's complete. Um and then on the bottom of that page. Uh question thirteen. About water bodies, uh. The the those were checked, yes, but if it's yes, then there has to be um some description. You know.
Dot and dash line there, that's the only water I have, it's like a runoff string that comes. Pretty much to hold back everybody's property.
So just uh that's fine, it just needs to, they they just ask for, it just asks and in the form for an next. Uh uh I did to identify it and.
Yeah.
If you're impacting it or not, that's all. I'm just, I'm just seeing stuff that's blank that I'm. Noting. I'll just say my last piece here, and then I'm done for with uh my comments. On the um on the sheet, on the on the memorandum dated November seventh. Under special use, uh this is the last page, the page three of three. Um I was just wondering, um I guess it it was a, it's been a a shop, a repair shop before, alright?
Well, it's my garage.
Okay. Alright, I'm just wondering, um you know, I'm just. If if you have um, you know, a plan in place to uh. Uh safely collect and dispose of. Um you know, oil, coolant, lubricants, you know, bad stuff like that.
Really coming across is used oil, and in the meantime, I'm also looking to. Uh recyclable furnace, so. Oil, so I don't have to worry about taking it anywhere, anything like that. So that was the biggest thing, I know New York's really big in that too, so. That was the other thing I was looking into now anyways.
Okay. Just um, you know, it's it's a. Repair shop and their fluids, so just uh.
Yeah, but small engine, so you don't get too much antifreeze or anything.
No, oh, you you you're not doing tractors or larger?
I'm doing the operation part of it, basically outdoor lawn equipment, you know, it's not into the big tractors and nothing like that.
So mostly not water cool stuff.
Yeah. You know, water cools into the bigger stuff.
Other questions?
So. You gonna be parking stuff outside the building or?
No, I'm keeping mostly inside.
All inside, no out, no outside parking event?
No, if I did, I'd put up a um. Wood fence around the backside of it, so it's not even pointing toward from the road at all.
And. For vehicle traffic, we anticipate. It was two a day, one a day.
Yeah, that's just what I said, I don't, not even sure now, I mean, road's busy anyways, I mean. Dutcher Road's about the busiest one, I think, down there, it's a shortcut to. The other end of it.
That does get used quite a bit.
Alright. Hey, everybody does, there's days you think thirteen shut down because of the traffic.
Especially uh. Well, like I said, especially farm trucks and stuff.
Oh, dude, man, I sometimes I don't see how they stop at that point, I really don't.
Alright.
Anything, but to me like an appropriate use of the site.
Yeah, it seems, yeah, yeah. We need to do a resolution to the. Joe Frank or uh Brad, anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh so we need to do a resolution to the town board, uh then we think this is an appropriate use. Any conditions that we wanna put on it, I mean?
Oh, one question, uh did did was there signage at all?
Yeah, down at the end, I actually have a sign, it's a four by two. You know, so I'm not putting no great big ten by ten sign up at the end of it, it's just sits on, if you're looking up the driveway, it's on right hand side. It's all.
Neon.
Well, just a regular sign, it's white, actually red and blue, so it's a red background, blue letter, so it stands out a little bit.
Sounds good.
Your sign warning and stuff we need to pay attention to or no?
What, it's on the building? On the end of the drive.
Yeah, it's actually that drawing, I think you seen there, it doesn't show it on that one.
Is it there now?
Is it there now? No, I got the hole, started getting the holes dug, but that's about it. It's over. From the side of the road.
So it's out of the, it's out of it's it's out of the town right away.
Oh, yeah, it's up far, it actually sits up on the bank and driveway.
Monument monument style sign.
Yeah, it's just gonna be. Four by tens, all this.
Not not wet.
Not let. Cause my hours are nine to five, so.
So it doesn't block your view trying to get out.
And my driveway has a turnaround anyway, so I drive out, I learned that over years, never back into road.
It's still gonna see both ways.
But it's up on the end of it, so you drive out the end of the driveway to the road, and that's all clear.
Alright, so.
So Tony, that we recommend that this is an appropriate use of the site, and I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, hi.
Hi.
Looks like it is.
Good luck with your business.
Good luck with. I mean, you still gotta go, so your next job is at the town board.
Tony or John or somebody, what's what's that big beige blob, I mean, I drive by, I go to Lowe's and such, but what what is that on that? That aerial view?
Did that one before.
Big beige blob. It's, I'm looking at this, um, topographic map, it's called, but it's not really, it's.
There's a barn across the street. Is that what you're looking at?
No, it's a, it's a big. I was to say it. It's a, just to the, uh, just to the. Of the applicant's property.
It's a plowed field.
Oh, to plow field, okay.
When, when, when this, when this picture was taken, that field apparently was.
They haven't updated in a while.
Yeah, yeah. It, it looks like that field was plowed or something and none of the other ones around it are.
It's, it's such a, a stark contrast. It just caught my eye.
My house, they're at the neighbor's house.
He's looking at that.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. I mean, there are leaves, there are leaves on the tree, so it's not in the winter or anything.
They haven't updated because most sites you go to, you won't even see the garage.
We're good.
Alright.
Uh, five eighty-seven Caswell subdivision.
Okay, so this is simply a, uh. Let's see, five eighty-seven. Bring up a site plan.
Flag lot.
So the person, this is just north of the Caswell landfill, uh, person wants to. Create a flag lot, but he's gonna need the variance from the ZBA. Uh, to, for frontage. Cause it reduces the frontage on the, uh, parent lot. So the ZBA can do this, but then in their law, they have to get a recommendation, they have to refer it to the planning board. So it's coming here first. To avoid the two stops at ZBA, so they can just deal with it at their next meeting.
Okay. Now, to be clear, they denied this guy's application because to put in the twenty-five foot. Right of way, it would have made the front footage on the adjacent lot less than what code requires.
On the parent lot, yeah. The two hundred and fifty foot required or the two hundred and seventy-five foot required. I'm remembering the place right. Yeah, we'll get a map up here.
There we are. And ZBA is seeking our opinion on this.
Yeah, I mean, they haven't seen, they haven't heard the case yet, but I'm coming on their behalf to get your opinion of it ahead of their.
Because. Because the way the law is written, they have to get an opinion from us.
Uh, yeah. So you can see that configuration is two hundred and eighteen point two feet of frontage on the parent lot. So they'd be reducing it by twenty-five foot. So it's really for the parent lot to be.
And, and so those other two. Those other two lots are existing, right?
Yep, unaffected by this.
The one with two hundred and one hundred and fifty feet. So all we're talking about is the one that had two hundred and. What was it? Two hundred and thirty, thirty? Well, but it's two hundred and eighteen plus the twenty-five, right? The original lot had two hundred and eighteen plus the twenty-five.
Uh, no, the original lot is two hundred and eighteen.
Twenty-eighteen, okay.
Might be useful to note that when our zoning consultant looked at our zoning, one of her comments was that our front footage requirements were too big.
Right.
But all those are. They're all small.
I don't, lots of record. I don't see where this changes. I don't see where this does anything to change the character of the.
Neighborhood or any neighborhood or anything like that.
I, I think it's okay.
If anything, it equalizes that piece with the other two next to it.
Correct, true, yeah. So we need to do a resolution to the zoning boards and we think this is okay. It does not change the character of the neighborhood. And, uh, we think that the subdivision would be okay for them to approve. Hey, Tony?
Yeah.
Um, this is kind of embarrassing. I have to apologize. I was looking at the, the S, the, the short form. For this project for the last applicant, so. I'm sorry, um, this is the one that's fourteen point six eight acres.
Right.
And, and this is the one where the, the answers, the questions weren't answered, the boxes weren't ticked. On page two. So, sorry, I was, I, I, I was confused on that.
Which on page two, those are the, those were the waterway questions?
The, on the top, the permitted use, the, uh, comprehensive plan, and then on the bottom. The applicant needed to complete that because he checked yes.
Yep.
All of that was for this project, not the last one. Sorry.
Okay. Yes, it, it turns out you were actually right about the other one. The other one was missing them too.
Oh, lucky me.
So, uh, resolution to recommend to the zoning board that this does not, uh. Change the character of the neighborhood and would be okay to. Approve.
That's our opinion.
That's our opinion, uh. Anyone wanna second that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
We're good on that. Uh, eighteen fourteen Hanshaw Road, this is an electronic billboard.
Yes, so we have the parking outdoor team here. Uh, their, uh, first application that the town board approved down by the nice egg intersection. They're not executing on that one. Uh, they can tell you what the DOT response was on that.
It took this long to get that response from the DOT. Wow.
Takes a long time.
Good day.
It was quite a while ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a long process, yeah.
Yeah.
Are we surprised?
Well, no, it's the DOT, but.
New York.
Yeah. Anyway, so go ahead.
So, so, yeah, if you wanna introduce, this is the, an application for having electronic billboard down at the Hanshaw intersection. And so it's an all, whole new SUP application.
Correct. So this application is for eighteen fourteen Hanshaw Road, which is in the. Brand new billboard overlay district for the town of Dryden. The site meets all the requirements from the town perspective in this instance, uh, as opposed to last time. So we didn't want to. Run into potential roadblocks that we ran to last time. We. Went to the DOT to seek, uh, approval from them first for this site and got it. So. Last time we didn't do that, we went through the normal channels of a process where we get a lease with a local landowner. We come to the town or the municipality for approval and, uh, then we went to the state. And, you know, we have forty-five digital billboards throughout our entire region. You know, we've never met. Um, an application that was met with such scrutiny with the state with that specific location. The last one. So this time we wanted to do it kind of in reverse. Let's go to DOT and. Have them tell us yes or no right away, so we don't have to go through another. Potential two years of everything that we did last time going through this process. It's something that we didn't want to do. We didn't anticipate, uh, doing that. And, uh, this, uh, this location, you know, provided us. An opportunity that albeit wasn't the, the route that we had planned on going initially. Um, but it is an opportunity that we can seek approval with the town and continue on with. Uh, should this be approved, uh, much like last time, there were three billboard structures, right? Four total faces. Um, that we would remove. Much like last time.
And so this is actually going up on that.
On the. Yeah, so the burn that's currently there, um. That wouldn't, it would more than likely flag that burn. Um, the landowners has his on premise sign that's there, that's located. And we could put a, um, monopole structure, but that monopole structure would either dictate that we have a conversation with the landowner, which I did, and he was open to it, that we could. Possibly move his on premise sign, or we keep his on premise sign where it is and we could. Basically, if you picture a flag, uh, the. Monopole structure would be on the one side of the berm and it would flag right over top of his sign. And there was room there. Um, if you notice on the, the survey and the, the site plan, there's elevations there that are. Our surveyor puts in there the elevation to the roadway, the elevation to the top of the berm, the elevation to the top of the existing sign. And then the elevation that we could have to get to be thirty feet to the top of the roadway. Top of our sign to the roadway.
Gina, can you scroll down to the one that shows sort of the drawing of the, the rendering of the. Of the sign itself, the billboard itself. One short page it's on. That one, there you go. That's right. He, he puts heavy equipment out there and also.
He does.
Sitting around the heavy equipment.
Yep.
And DOT was okay with this.
They were.
This, this sign is all similar specification size, all that of the one that was gonna go.
Yes.
The other spot.
Yep, exactly.
Same brightness.
Same everything, yeah. Would be the same, maybe the same brightness, same height.
Pretty as part of the road, so. Where they were looking at previously was a little prettier, you know, and if you're gonna put up a sign like this around other power lines and. Other equipment and other signs, it's not as much of a disturbance visually to me. Well, it's already, it's a little bit of an industrial looking site.
It likes the dozers over there.
And I like industry, to be clear.
Okay, that's good to me, Tom. Questions. I mean, it looks fine to me, assuming, you know, it, it's gonna meet all, like I said, it's gonna meet all the dark sky stuff and all, all the same. Specs and all that stuff that we did. We already approved one of these. We're just moving the location. I think it's fine.
Can I make a comment off of site plan review?
Okay.
So when this was presented to us, and Paul presented it to us, he talked about giving the town. Access to the, for community. And it never got into your, in the, into the town, when you did special use permit before.
Get privileges to, to use it for emergencies?
Well, to use it for like, you know, banner, show like, oh, you know, put in your application for, you know, the town needs volunteers, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think I asked for that, but I think it was a bit of a concession for them, for their.
Well, it'd be, it'd be nice for them to offer that.
I think in the interest of, you know, partnership with the town, and of course it would be, um, subject to availability. On that specific time, if, if there was, um, messaging slot that was available for. Something that the town might want to put out there that's town related, that might have to do, I'm assuming that's what you're talking about with the meetings or.
Yeah, yeah, volunteer, because like this time of year volunteers are needed, because.
Sure.
They, they come up and.
We do that with other municipalities that we have, um, uh, locations with, where we'll work with them. We've done it in the city of Auburn. We've done in, uh, Seneca Falls. We do it in different areas where, you know, when we wanna help. Generate good community support, whether it be with the, the local law enforcement or. Fire department or anything.
I only bring it up because I was disappointed, because Paul pushed that.
Sure.
Before and then it didn't happen. And so I thought, I'm gonna remind you now. Them to make that.
Oh, I think again, in the interest of a true partnership, when you do something like this, that, that's something that, uh, again. Subject to availability and, you know, we're a local company. We're literally right up the road from here and. We have good relationships with the, you know, we, we know Ray and Dan and. Uh, it literally would just make a matter of somebody picking up the phone and making a phone call and, and making that request and. Uh, I don't anticipate having it being a no at any point in time.
Yeah, it, it, then it wouldn't be very awesome, I don't think.
True.
Yeah, but then, if you offer them, at least in my opinion.
Who would we contact if, if we had a special message like, um, rabid dog on the loose?
What'd you suggest here? I would, I would probably suggest our, our VP GM that, um, oversees this particular market, which is out of Elmira and I can. I can give that contact information to you, Dan or for Ray if we need to.
Get it to Ray.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so we do a resolution to the town board, uh. We, I don't think we're gonna put any conditions other than they need to adhere to the. Similar to the, to the, uh, original, uh, requests, specifications. Uh, but the site seems.
Seems fine.
Appropriate and, uh. We think.
I had a question.
Yeah, go ahead. Um, on, uh, page. Oh my gosh, is there a page number here? Sorry, no page number here, but it's, uh, item D. The overall impact question or. Uh, this, the answer was this project will have no impact on traffic, noise or glare and will follow any and all. New York State DOT and Town of Dryden ordinance related to digital signs. So the question I have is. Can either the applicant or Ray or Gina refer us to specific DOT and. Or town ordinances, ordinances for verification?
There, there is a, there is a billboard. This is part of the overlay district. What's the number of the ordinance?
I don't have. Okay, so this is just a blanket saying we're gonna follow it all.
Yep.
Okay, alright.
Uh, and, and they've already gotten the DOT approval, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they're good. So I think they're good.
And that information, as far as the town was concerned, I know that we've had, um, many different meetings with different officials here regarding. Um. The sensitivity to digital and.
Right.
Dark sky and everything like that. So yeah, absolutely. That's why I wanted that in there.
Okay. Alright. So motion to make that recommendation that I described to the town board.
I'll do it.
Greg, seconded, all in favor?
My, hi.
Hi.
Uh, uh, it's unanimous, Troy. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm, I'm, I'm glad DOT is not gonna be an issue this time. Boy, that's.
That's, uh, like I said, it wasn't anything that we were expecting at the time to kind of. Of all of our other locations, we've never run into that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, twenty twelve Dryden Road.
Okay, so this is an introduction, uh. The aftergo was before the board a couple of years ago. And now she's looking to expand the business and just wanting to get some feedback from the board before she invests more in the design of the, actually remodel. So if you'd like to introduce your idea?
Uh, yes, so, um, we would like to put an addition on the back of twenty twelve Dryden Road. The dimensions would be thirty feet, um, across the back and then thirty-two feet out.
I didn't see in your application what you planned to put inside of it.
Um, storage, space?
Uh, no, no employees?
Yeah. No.
New employees?
No, I mean, we, we may have new employees, but that's just because we're growing and some people have. Switched to work remotely, so.
Right, yep, okay.
We're, we, we are trying to hire a few people right now. Right, and we have, um, I have a machine that I'd like to purchase that will cut, um, banners, so that may be a place where I'll put it. But it's not something that's used all the time. So it's just, is, is a large machines. I could, I could put it inside, but it just would require me taking out a double door to get it in because it's. It's just large. I mean, it's space, but I'd like to build a place where I can easily get it in there.
I don't have, break, can you remind me what the business is?
Um, it's called Math and Movement and, um, it's an educational program that allows students to. Learn math and other academic subjects through movement and physical activity. So we have, um, the machines to. Uh, print banner and we, we print this out and then we cut it and just. Nail it, but that's just the production part of it. Most of the business is. The, um, that is, is things that we do remotely, it's activities that we create. Um, and then the sales and marketing for the business. The, the only thing we really do at this place is to, uh, create the materials.
So the change to the site plan is the addition off the back. Is that the only change? So the change to the site plan is the addition off the back, is that the only change?
Wouldn't be seen from the road.
Would not be seen from the road, it's completely hidden from the road.
What's, is there a distance from the back property line?
Um, all right, so, so we own, the total is about eleven acres, but it is divided into two parcels, so it is two independent parcels. And so the parcel that's not where the house is, is a much bigger parcel. And I think this parcel is about an acre, but I don't really know. Distance to the back, I actually don't know that.
But you own both parcels, but.
That is correct.
But there is a, there is a lot line.
There is a lot line there somewhere, correct.
Can we get this over with something?
Well, you see the application, it's not really filled in, there's not much of a sketch.
But I did, I did try to do a sketch. You know, and I brought.
They have the building drawn on it?
I do.
Does this need?
I mean, you could take it as complete.
Does it need seeker?
As an amendment for a site plan, we should be doing seeker, or acknowledge that the prior seeker is appropriate to apply to this.
I, I agree, Greg, this is a trivial thing that I would very much like to send you on your way and say good luck.
I, I, that's what I was hoping.
So this is, this, so the, but the overall thing is a site plan that's always with us, that's a site time review that's always with us.
Correct, and it's an amendment on a prior, so you could theoretically lean on that prior seeker.
Yeah. It's not really, it's not changing anything that was in that secret.
Right. All we're changing is the footprint of the building.
Thirty by thirty two.
I just have a question, so what makes this not an addition? Like, is that something in the building code that doesn't make an addition?
No, it is an addition onto the building, but it's, it's enlarging the footprint that shows up on the site plan.
I'm just curious, that's. Because this is, because they, they had to go through a site plan review before, so they're changing the site, because it does change the footprint of the buildings, what you can just say.
And is there any plan to address the pole barn out back, or is that some later down the road?
We're actually kind of undecided about that, so we, we might at some point want to take down an old dilapidated barn and put another building there, but it hasn't, it's totally separate.
Is that back on the other lot?
That, that, the pole barn right now is on the other lot.
We, we should also note that our current zoning does not address this issue of when does a modification to an approved site plan exceed a threshold that causes it to need to come back to us.
Right, right.
So, I mean, I've looked at these before, to, well, this is nothing, why, why do we have to look at this? And hopefully, when we redo our zoning, we'll put in some special information, whereas Ray, your department might be able to look at this and say, yep, this is a fairly trivial thing, go for it.
So are one of you making a motion to waive further site plan review?
I will do that, and also that we believe that the seeker form and so forth that, well, we did with the original is sufficient for this application.
Is that okay? My word, sorry. Any issues, Joe, Brad, or Frank?
No, I agree.
So John moved, Chris seconded in favor?
I.
Got something. Any further discussion? I'm supposed to do that between, between the.
Yeah.
Further discussion? No, all in favor?
All right.
Yeah, so you, yeah, so you can just work with.
Work with Reagan.
Yeah. Sounds reasonable, good luck.
A good holiday.
Thank you.
See, we got one out sooner than expected, and one that's great.
If you know the amount, yeah. Yeah, that's something that's computed by the, the code officers for the applications. Yep, yep, yeah, give them a call to find out the amount.
Okay. Uh, zoning audit next steps, I guess, I, I put this on here, because I just after we had our. After we had our meeting, you know, so we had our special meeting where we went through the review, and then, and then, John, I know you talked a lot about next steps and what we'd wanna do, but I guess, what are people's thoughts on what we should be doing as a next step?
All right. I think we should write something, some sort of, something for the conservation board to look at.
Okay. So, so has, let me ask this, has this, has this document that she created, has it been shared with the other boards?
Um. I sent it out to all of them.
Is it, is it online yet?
No, it's not online, I think I shared it out to every board.
Or it'll show up in the minutes for that meeting.
Yeah, I don't know, that would be a joy question if it's appended. I mean, did you approve a set of minutes with that appendage to it?
Oh, we haven't, we haven't even done that. I don't know, I don't think we, well, I don't think.
Haven't seen the minute.
I haven't seen minutes from that meeting, the special meeting.
I think Joy sent it out, I think it was just a one pager.
I sent them out like the next day.
All right. Uh, okay. So.
So we should write something for the.
We should write something to the, well, is it, is it just the conservation board, or I think, I think it's conservation ag.
What do you want? Let's talk, can we talk about conservation, what, what we want them to do?
Sure.
And it's preparing buffers, or are we trying to do the whole town, or are we just trying to do the, the major waterways, Casabilla Creek and Walker? We doing all, all of them, all the creeks? We're just doing the two major?
Greg, your point that you're making is part of a much bigger discussion, how we only approach the update, we wanna light it off all at once, to wanna pick a subset of the recommendations, go forward with them. But as a scope of the question, that we really haven't resolved, and then then, you know, I think, based on that, the planning board could develop what we think is the appropriate goal. And include that as a recommendation, and then we send it out.
Okay, we can do that.
So that, that's one piece of it, and then another piece that we need to be thinking about is communication. For those of you who are on the planning board, when we did the comprehensive plan update, you might recall that the consultant had quite a thorough and elaborate communication plans proposal that they brought to us, that included several, three or four different types of meetings with different stakeholder groups and stuff like that. And it was good, it was very well done. As graciously as we could, but my point is, we need to figure that out, we need to develop a communication plan, and I think that happened in parallel, because regardless of what we decide to do, we need to roll it out to the community.
But we don't have a plan, but.
We don't have a plan.
To roll out?
Nope, we don't have a plan, we need to have a plan, and it's not clear to me what role Nan will play, and I don't think she's got credit for people resources, but last company had, they pretty much grew the bus a lot. So we need to figure that out.
Chris?
Just going over my notes from that meeting of like the next steps, which the first one, what she kind of covered was getting the recommendations to all the committees or boards to get their feedback over the next few months of what their priorities are. And then for us to kind of do a prioritization of kind of what we wanna look at, is it the memorandums and zoning? Is it laws and procedures, like, do we wanna get rid of that kind of low hanging type of procedural stuff that can make big improvements into designing stuff where we could pass it pretty quickly? And then kind of rank the other ones based on their facts or. So, community involvement as well.
So, I think between now and next meeting, it would be nice if we could get, like, I don't know, I guess, would that come from me, or who would it come from? If it's a communication to the other boards, who would that come from?
It can either, you know, I could put it out of my office or from the chair, be appropriate.
Because what I'm thinking is, what we should do is get a communication out to at least conservation, but I think it should be more than conservation, but, but at least at least conservation and ag and.
CBA.
Well, all the groups that Nan spoke to.
Yeah. And make sure that, you know, say, if they've already received it, say, you know, you've received this, you know, now we'd like to see.
Recommendations.
What, what in this would be priorities to your to your board, right? And, because I, you know, like, I know the ZBA has stuff they'd like to see done, I know I'm sure, you know, ag does, and conservation, but, but we could also, in communicating with conservation, maybe mention reperion buffers, and you know, maybe they start thinking about that and thinking, maybe that's a question for them. You know, do they think it's something we should try to do through the whole town, or just, or just through, you know, just hit the major ones? I don't know, like.
And should the, should the circulation list, list include the Trail Task Force and the Climate Smart Clean Energy Task Force?
Okay.
Question.
Yeah.
And do you really want the open-ended question at this point, or do you wanna decide?
Yeah. So what are we, all right, so what are we asking now?
No, that's what I think we should talk about.
Yes, absolutely, we need to talk about it.
Before you throw it out there.
You know, for me, I think the town board, it would be helpful for me to hear the town board, Ray, and in particular on how urgent the issue of causing is, because we're, this is what I think the low hanging fruit is. Things like seller accessory dwellings, and we should have regulations on that, making duplexes and up by right, and so complex regulatory pathways, and things like that, there's all a list of things like that that are.
The SUP process.
Yeah, and, and for me, that's the low hanging fruit, that's the really important stuff that I think the town might be doing right now, and then there were a whole bunch of other things.
Right.
She cleans up in her zoning that we can work on over time, but housing's a big deal, so Dan, I would ask.
Speaking for the town board, and I know my colleagues would have my back on this, is we want the housing issue addressed. You know, that was one of the driving forces to have this done, as soon as we did. Uh, we think we've got, well, we know we have a housing crisis, and and, and I think she pointed us in a number of good directions regarding ADUs and mobile homes, and, you know, all the family lots, and trying to, you know, reduce single family lots, I should say, where possible. Um, I think we have to, you know, I had on my list, you know, fixing the definitions, as she said, looking for writing out state law a little more than just the citation of state law. And then the housing issue, and then addressing data, data centers, I think we've got to do that in our first swing at this.
Well, that, because that has the moratorium, right, that's definitely on the list of things we have to be addressing, but.
So those are things that I thought we could probably get into, and, and then, you know, broadly speaking, I guess, one of my questions I had is, you know, how much of this can we do in-house among ourselves, and how much do we need external, you know, help with? If any, you know, in terms of, you know, helping us rewrite our, our zoning.
Calling the housing issue low fr, low hanging fruit could be misleading in that when you change things that lead to more dense housing, that can trigger people worrying about their property values, worrying about their neighborhoods, et cetera, may not, when we say low hanging fruit, it doesn't mean it's not gonna be controversial. At least that's a thought that I had, listening to this.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think we see it that way, I think we see that as a low hanging priority maybe.
There's two things here, there's the low hanging fruit, which to me are the things like the definitions, and that kind of stuff, that's, that's the easier part, but then there's these, I guess I would call them priorities, right, there's housing as a priority. We have this moratorium on data center, so we have to, you know, we have to look at that one, and so there's some things that we just need to look at. Agree with you, Joe, it's probably not as simple as low hanging fruit makes it sound, does it?
Well, they're the big fruit that are hanging low. Easier to pick.
Yeah, yeah.
Pardon me for inserting an opinion, but Nan reminded us a couple of times in that dialogue that there is an easy way to deal with data centers and crypto, and that is to say, we don't have that service here in this town. We won't have that service in this town.
That, that, Joe, that's actually a good point, and that might be a good question for the town board, because we, we could spend a lot of time trying to draft something that would work for small scale, but if you don't want it at all, what's the point?
And trying even to legislate so that was indeed small scale and nothing more. The same kind of test, so I agree with you, Greg.
Yeah.
I, you know, would ask, is there any place in town where we would tolerate it, and maybe it's just such a prescribed area that it's not going to be useful.
I think it's a good question, the town board to have to talk about, to say if, because we could talk about small scale and draft something for small scale, but if you don't, if the town board could just say.
Well, small scale doesn't necessarily have any impact on power use, and that probably is the gorilla in the room, right?
Who we set an energy limit on what these things use, and, and, you know, if we put a zoning reg on, on data centers and crypto, could we say you can't operate using more than X megawatt?
And do we think that our staff would be able to monitor that and enforce any rule like that?
Uh, well, these are the, now you guys could come back and say, we looked into this, it's not practical, or you can come back and say, you know, Tonawanda did it, and this is the regulation that they came up with.
Joe, you said something, I, I didn't catch what it was.
I said what, sorry?
You, you said something a minute ago, I didn't.
I said, well, I was asking the question if we thought our staff was able to monitor and enforce any rule that had to do with the power usage.
How, how would we enforce that rule, right?
It'd be self-reporting, so.
Yeah, I think enforcement. I mean, it would have to do with the size of the service that was being installed, so, you know, if, if the size of the service being installed in the building is gonna be inspected by the building code officers, right, so, I mean, and if they wanted to upgrade the service, like, if they wanted to go to a thousand amp service coming into a building, you'd have to go through a building permit process for that, and electrical inspections, right?
Well, we already are, think we strain our resources to, to enforce to, to monitor and enforce very traditional rules, now if we get into the technicalities of power usage and the kind of infrastructure, technical, digital infrastructure that's involved. Uh, I think we need to think very clearly and thoughtfully and consult our staff about their capability to do that.
Okay.
And there might be other industries that are already permitted that would have equivalent uses of energy. Correct, so just monitoring it, uh, energy use would not be a sufficient control.
Right.
I mean, realistically, we can't even get uh, monitoring of site plan provisions like plantings to be followed by applicants, I don't know how you could monitor energy.
We were talking about in the building permit phase.
Yeah, but the energy usage, like, okay, approve it, but they can draw as much as they want, like, how are you gonna monitor that? Any residential house could set up a grow operation, and they could use as much energy as they want.
Within the confines of whatever services.
Put in that house. Yeah.
Right, I mean, I, I mean, a house with a hundred amp service can only draw so much power. Right?
Well, and we're, of course, then thinking of the good faith of the applicant.
Yeah.
Wouldn't try and run around that after the fact.
Right. All right.
I still think.
Uh, Dan, you, I think, had a broader question, and that is, can we do this phase one, it's on an updated house?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, something is deceptively complicated. I I would strongly recommend that we keep Nan on board to help us. I would strongly recommend that we keep Nan on board to help us with this. I it's complicated.
Okay, even even something like definitions.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
No question or mind about that. I. I've I've spent lots and lots of time trying to understand. Many of the issues around how it's only is read in the kind of order response to it. And uh. One of the things that keeps coming back to me is that it's a quiet matter, that there are so many roles that you could fall into. And uh, but you'll have someone like Nan, who's got a great deal of experience, especially in the rural community, who's trying to do what we want to do.
Yeah. Okay, uh, well, some of you have been here a while, when we last updated our zoning, did we? Hire somebody to help with that process?
It's done in house.
That was done.
They put a template, didn't they?
Dan, that Dan Kwanowski and and uh Mail and Perkins.
Frank has a question.
Which is part of our problem. I mean, I don't want to disparage anybody, but you know.
Sorry, Frank, go ahead.
No, it's so I I'm. Really in support of keeping her on while we go through this, because to me, it's also a mediator too, because every, you know, everybody has their own opinions on this. You get off us all together trying to, you know, get our opinions to all line. She's the one that kind of comes in with more black and white. Vision and can guide us in a way that I think is really important and we'd have a better outcome.
And.
Yeah, and not to disparage Mail and and Dan in any way, but um we're trying to revise their work because. It doesn't meet of our expectations or standards.
Right. Well, the part for me. Is I come back to. Who's actually going to write? Right, the document, right? And and so, you know, we can talk about it, make recommendations and all that, but somebody needs to sit down and actually type it all up. Right? And then come back and say, okay, here here here's what you guys said, here's here's what we said we were going to do, here's all typed up. This is what we want to do. So somebody has to sit down and type that up and who's who would.
Doesn't the town attorney have a hand in this?
They'll re- they'll review it a- after it's.
They'll they'll review it after it's done. It's not their role to write it.
I think man.
Well, that that's what I'm saying. That's that's why I'm I'm in favor of using it, because.
Yeah.
I would, I would.
Did you volunteer?
Awesome.
What are you doing for the next five years?
I I I guess my point, Dan, is if we're going to do it in house, somebody has to actually like sit down and 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 put. But I I mean, I I wanted to say pen to paper, that's not how we write things anymore, but. But you know what I'm saying, right? Somebody has to actually write it all out. And and I know I'm not comfortable doing that. Um, but I don't know, you know, I mean, if we have somebody that can do that. I think, you know, at 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 our direction, you know, I think that's possibly a reasonable approach, but. I I mean, I think Nan can do it a lot faster, actually.
And with a lot more experience and background than anybody on our staff.
You agree with that?
Yeah, oh, her insight's going to be.
You know, but you'd rather have her do it than.
Yes.
See us hack at it.
Definitely, because otherwise things, other duties are going to fall off the plate, and I don't think that's worth it.
I think, yeah, I think we should just make the big decisions, so.
Yeah.
We like it or not.
So we do have to answer some of her questions, I mean, we'll we'll have to.
We have, I mean, we have, we have a lot of work to do, but there's that, that, you know, that. That piece of actually putting it into words is is in my mind, a big piece and and. Having somebody who really knows what they're doing with that and, you know, has the time because they're being contracted to do it, right? I think it's not, it's not a side job, right? It's. If you know.
Can you, somebody like her with her qualifications even better than a lawyer?
Right. Well, we'll have to look at the outline that she provided us with, and then come back and say, we agree here and and. Somehow summarize our views.
Correct.
So she knows what to revise and and put in proper form.
Exactly.
So that's still going to be a lot of work for us and and and, you know. I don't know, we'll do do this, you know, as as complete group, a committee of the whole.
And then, so the the question with that is. Moving forward, do we make it as a part of these meetings, which I think would be difficult to do? Or do we start scheduling special meetings for this? Or do we do a subcommittee that, you know, sort of starts hacking away at it, that brings it's brought gets brought back to the whole board? What do we think is the best? Approach? I'll think about that. Okay. So I I'm going to have this on the agenda for next month. Uh, I think people's homework in that is we need to figure out exactly what we want to communicate to the. Other boards. So kind of our homework with that is be thinking about those things, and maybe we can hammer that out at the next meeting. We need to.
Too many chefs.
Decide if we're going to leave the design guidelines into the zoning law.
Yeah.
Or keep separate.
Right, that was her recommendation, was to incorporate the design guidelines into the into the zoning law, which makes more sense to me. Yeah, I don't know how the board feel.
That makes sense.
I thought Oliver.
Big sense.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, to compartmentalize this one starting place would be, we've had a. An appendix or a separate section, the recommendation for housing, and then another one for manufactured housing. And I think those are the main starting steps. If we were to say, this is where we would like to start, you know. Plus, the data center piece that we need to resolve. Uh, there are any other things, but. That would be a way to. Pick up a piece of it that we would start on that's most important to us. So that's something that we like, we shouldn't think of them. And then, I think another question, uh. For Nan is. How much resource does she have to help us with community outreach plan? When we did the comp plan, if you recall. We started with the key stakeholder meetings, so we had three different groups of key stakeholders, there were maybe a dozen each of three meetings. Not an EDR. Ran those meetings.
Right.
Yep, uh, and then that transitioned into the bigger community meetings again, which EDR. Uh, ran those. And then we also did uh meetings where individual or groups of planning board members. Went out and met with different groups in the community. I can't remember what we called those. Um, but it was just another way to get the word out. My uh, my point is, for Nan, how much resource does she have to do sort of what EDR did for us with the. Comp plan? I think the community outreach piece is in magnitude similar. It's important to really get out there and.
So the. When the zoning was done before, it was almost all written before it went out to the public.
Yeah, and I'm I'm thinking about Nan's experience at Woodstock, where they spent an enormous amount of time. Writing of language for plan and putting a whole lot of money into it, and then it got shot down.
Was that an update or uh an initial set of zoning?
He didn't say, but uh when Ray and I toured her around the town, she spoke at some length about. Uh, how difficult that was, how much of her time she put into it, and also the. Planning uh department at Woodstock, they invested enormous resources on that. And then it went value, I think. We need to avoid.
That was a rewrite, I I think.
Yeah, but can can we avoid some of that? So, I mean. I agree with you that. You know, in many cases, that doesn't go out until it's been basically written and people go, okay, here's what we want to do. But I'm wondering if there should be some community outreach upfront that is more along the lines of. You know, what issues do you have with our current zone? And and, you know, but I may, maybe that's asking the wrong question.
Right, I think the uh the community outreach pieces would uh start with a comprehensive plan, which. We believe the community that's bought into it, and to talk about the direction that that has sent us. To and that we wrote up an RFP for consultants to do the critique of a. Zoning to tell us how it is or isn't assisted with comprehensive plan. And then share with the community in the general sense, all of the recommendations, there won't be a lot of detail. But, you know, here's the gist of the direction that we're headed in, and then we're split it into phases, and the first phase we want to focus on is really critical things. But that would be sort of the outline for all the communications that we have, and I think it needs to be done at home.
See what happens.
Yeah.
No, I think we start, I mean, that's all important, of course, public outreach, but I think we can start to make. Um, the public application process easier and our review process easier with like the. Any review process, the design guidelines, definitions, so that the application, the applicants and like our reviews are all. Streamlined with what the recommendations Nan got forth. Uh, includes SUPs and all all other ones that were mentioned.
Yep, and her. Appendix or whatever was on housing, talked about that, I think there are ways to. Uh, relieve the regulatory burden around uh doing the things that you want to do.
Okay. So where does that leave us? We need to reach out to Nan to find out about public outreach.
If she's available.
If she's available. Uh, do we, what, do we need to do another contract with her, or can we just extend the one we have? Or.
Uh, we'd have to write up a new scope and and agree on. The extensions, I I think we could do it without an RFP.
That's what I'm thinking, you know, continuing working with her, because I think when we initially had a contract, there was a component about additional work. There's like a.
About additional work, so we need to scope that. Uh. Ray, is that something? You would write up or?
Yeah, I can discuss with Nan about.
Yeah.
What additional scope she was able to take on, including one of those outreach pieces.
But I think I I I agree with you, John, I think the things you listed out and 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 the things Chris mentioned, I think are. You know, that's kind of, I I hate to expand the first step too far, but but I think. You almost have to address some of the things, some of the things like the definitions and the and the processes. You know, site plan reviews and those processes as part of the housing thing, right? I mean.
One of the, one of the recommendations, uh. That I read in different places is. For starters, take off a manageable bite.
Yep.
The update, yeah, we try to do it all, I want to take it on something that's important to you. That's small enough, you can comprehend it, get it done, and get some experience.
Mm-hmm.
But it grew. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be a good step.
I think that's a good step. So we did talk with her about.
Right, so if we were to address the, for instance, definitions, state law, housing and data centers, as the first bite. Because that, along the lines that you're talking about, John, and then we'd have community, we'd say, this is what the comp plan says, this is what our consultant says. These are the things, the remedies we're considering, what are your thoughts?
And here's where we would like to start.
Yeah, and 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 let the public, you know, weigh in in that manner, and then we draft something. And vote on it.
I I don't think anybody would be objection to the definitions being typed.
No, no.
And I don't think anybody would object to this fashion use permit being produced.
And these are trusted, then we start to do it like that, and 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 we build trust, and then we go with our next bite, and 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 they get to.
That's what I wondered, if you had some drafts going and said, this is what we're thinking, would be, oh, these definitions aren't. You know, just something to show the public at the same time, you know, because they're going to read the definitions, they're going to look at it and go, it makes no sense to them. But if you have something to show them. That it's not going to change that much, it's just going to be more definitive.
Well, the bullet items in Nan's residential section were fairly specific.
We, but we're talking definition. And 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 a lot of, you got to remember, a lot of what she wants to do is. Only, it's only in areas of water and sewer. Very small. Very small, very small.
Are across.
Maybe, but you, but if you put an ADU in your in your front yard, you got to have a septic system that meets it, so you might have to change your tank from a thousand gallon tank. Or fifteen hundred gallon tank, you might have to add another. Another fifteen hundred square feet of field.
That's right.
So it's not, it's not an automatic, you know, all these ideas are great, but. In reality, you know, people don't realize that, you know, it's like. When you go to build it. First thing health department says, what size tank you got, you got to add another bedroom. You know, it's not real, you know, they're going to, they're going to say, you know, what size tank you have, so you're going to have to get your tank survey. You know, what if you only have a seven fifty? It's like, oh, geez, you know, and they got out.
Well, wouldn't it be helpful to have that spelled out that we're, you know. We, you know, a septic concept of ADUs, but caveat. You know, health department's got to approve this sort of thing, and and some people know.
It is, it is, but it's not, it's not a given that, I mean, everybody thinks it's going to fix everything, but it's.
No. I hear it, there's no silver bullet.
I mean, and 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 the big picture issue with it. Affordable housing and housing, you got to have water and sewer. No, no, if you enter bus. Got a water sewer. Want to try to get high density, get your density up like it is in Barna. Yeah.
Or Ezra Village, yeah.
That's that's in the, that's in the village. We have no control over the village, so.
So do we want to try to? Bring to the next meeting from each of us, like. Looking at the recommendations and trying to come to some sort of consensus for kind of areas to look at first.
I think that's it. In the meantime. We'll contact Nan and find out what her availability is and. And and how, what she thinks about this idea of the things that Dan just mentioned, you know, kind of the.
Yeah, when she could do some work on this as well, you know.
Okay, uh, anything else on this topic for the moment? Everybody knows what we're doing. Somewhat. Alright. Uh, planning department update.
Hey, uh, we just got a lead agency letter from DEC, the RMS Travel, or the new owners are head of bird, you have. Applied to expand sixty-two acres at their mine site.
So over here on Lot Road?
Yeah, this is the first I've heard inside, I have contacted to get the application, there's the. To amend our SUP. That's really in the works. Um.
So going on deeper?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I haven't seen anything. They said they enclosed the application with the letter, but there was simply a two page letter. Um, so this just came in yesterday, so there's a lot of follow up, but that's something that uh I would expect to. Uh, send out over the next month and in December, if there's any comments to that, uh. As far as the lead agency letter, we have thirty days to respond to that. So, um. Yeah, we'll just do, we'll just see if there's anything that we want to respond to this time.
But I mean, they already have a pretty big site over there.
Yeah, yeah, I forget the acre, a couple hundred acres, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then another thing, just to look down the road, the Dollar Store was bought by Hardwood Company, and. They are currently, we haven't seen that application yet. But they're going to apply for establishing retail there, and it's half the size of Village, half the size of Town. Um, you know, there, I would. I would hope that this planning board would want to take lead agency on it. For the entire site, but they're going to have to go through a separate permit from the village. But at least if we do the seeker for the entire site.
So what part of that site is Village?
Uh, the north part on. Ellis.
The one on Ellis, is it?
All the side on Ellis, okay.
So we have the the Dollar Store site on. Route thirty-eight.
Where where the, where the building and the parking lot are, our town.
But they're apparently looking to store building materials out on the north side of that building. So, big, big operation.
Yeah.
So that I haven't.
Not going to be good bragway. But not really are.
Um, and then a couple of. Things that we might see on the December meeting, there's a Lower Creek Road, uh, where a single lot, they want to put a couple of duplexes on. And so this would be. Looking at it. Uh. To be subdivided, not to go through subdivision, but to be, see if it would be subdivided into two, and then they could. Go through site plan review here to get approved for two duplexes. Uh, kicker is it's only two hundred fifty feet of frontage. So again, it would be kind of like that earlier case tonight where. Uh, the ZBA would have to grant a, the variance. And uh, they they don't, we don't have to go through the subdivision process, but we have to go all the steps up until that point. So. An evaluation here is whether that's a desirable thing. Putting in two duplexes on this create a lot with only two hundred fifty foot frontage. Right? And then, uh, probably that Henshaw Road, Cardinal Drive, UD, that will be an introduction in November, and possibly the age friendly training that we were talking about. The, there's not a project reviews, we can fit those two things in as an introduction in December. That might be on. That's all I have. From that, uh, presentation you had on the big Saturday, when you started. And Paul, for 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 us, there's nothing we need to do. Well, considering a battery, you know. So that would be in that first. First day of zoning.
The one, that that's another one of those priority things on the zone.
It feels that way, we didn't. It feels that way, we didn't talk about it, but I think that's probably on the list too.
That is, that is on the list of things we want to. Attack sooner rather than later.
Call that a battery loan?
Yeah, there is a model law that I sort of put out, so there's a starting point.
Yeah, right.
Right.
It's in my turn.
Yeah, yeah, your turn.
Yeah, so just before I was here, I was down at the county legislature, they were finally taking up a resolution that I worked on. Through T cog about, uh, county. Uh, becoming an essential, I I was trying to put this, they're weighing in on state legislation. Making. Light rescue, emergency response and ambulances. Essential service in New York State. And then there's this whole, I'm I'm sure you all know about this crisis that we're facing in ambulance service. Um, we've we've lost a lot of volunteers, we've lost about a quarter of our volunteer base statewide in the last five years and that's. No different here, we have a real challenge meeting. Emergency response, and so the state is grappling with this idea of of declaring. Ambulance and EMS an essential service, just like fire is for towns and and so counties would be charged with. Determining, you know, who's providing ambulance and light rescue throughout and. Basically have a C O N or certificate of a need through the health department to provide this service countywide. Uh, they would be required to do that and and, um. Speaking to the legislature, uh, I wasn't sure how, you know, they would embrace this idea, but they they. Are going to pass this resolution tonight and they're open to the idea of trying to get going on this before it becomes a state law. Uh, that the county should be playing a bigger coordination role. For EMS services and and that really is important to Dryden because we're a donor when it comes to EMS services. Um, and and, you know, our our ambulance is is top flight, you know, we got a great operation with Dryden Ambulance. But we pay for it, and we pay one point two million a year and 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 tax revenue for that service and. About forty percent of the ambulance calls go outside of our town. And that is not acceptable, I'm sure I don't need to tell you, and I had a meeting with a county legislator this afternoon. Who a agrees and and wants to work on this with us, uh, and and that was prior to this, uh. Meeting of the whole legislature, so I think we're getting some traction from the county legislature on this issue. And and I think it's really important for our residents and 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 equity, um, and I'm I'm not gonna let go of this issue. I think how we manage fire and ambulance is critical, it's it's about half of our our budget, not quite.
So is the, is the thought that. With this coordination, we would not do anything outside the town, or would that, or would we just get more funding to help cover that forty percent that they're covering that?
We need to come up with a funding mechanism, um, I don't want to start revealing too much, but I think. But I think they're hearing from me and and and, um, some of my colleagues that the county needs to look at this holistically. Recognize that Dryden ambulance and Tru Mansford ambulance are serving a lot outside their tax base.
Right.
And they're, you know, I I wouldn't call it freeloaders, I don't think people even know, you know, they they call nine one, they expect someone to get there. And 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 the municipal leaders don't really think about, you know, who's paying for it, um, Bangs, Dryden, Tru Mansford, Dryden will show up.
Right.
And it it's a transport related call, if it's just an EMS call, you know, a fall or or somebody needing, you know. Uh, you know. A checkup. Like a lot of our alpha calls are, uh, then then our light rescue takes care of it, but either way, we're providing a lot of this service that, uh, is is kind of pro bono. And generous because.
You can't really say no to a mutual aid call, right? I mean, we shouldn't be saying no to mutual aid.
Not with EMS, but ambulance calls, we we could, we could say that's outside our area, but we're not, that's not who we are.
No, I know.
Um, but there are municipalities like that, you know, it's the pay pay to spray concept, you know, and and fire, you know, you didn't pay, we're not spraying. Um, so. Between fire and ambulance, it's it's half our budget and, you know, but we passed a seven point three million dollar budget last week and. You know, I, one of the things I ask of the fire departments is, you know, let's, let's try and keep our requests within the, um. And I would say, it obviously has to be more than inflation because the cost of their equipment is going up, but it's been double digit. And, um, budget requests over the last few years and that's just not sustainable, so we we more or less capped it and and, um. This week we'll be talking about individual contract levels and that's, it's gonna be a difficult meeting. Um, I'll tell you right now, but this is, we have to grapple with this stuff and it has a lot to do with quality life in this town and, um. Um, you know, people's protection of their lives and property, so. I'm a big deal. Um, the other thing, you know, we we continue to work on, um, this relationship with Caroline and and Dryden Fiber. And and we're doing things that haven't been done before in terms of inter municipal agreements to. Divide up this nine million dollars and that that we have to use to extend broadband out and, um, so. Been a lot of calls with our lawyer and 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 Caroline leaders about what this agreement looks like just this week. Um, and I want to give you an update on the Freezer Road Bridge, it's cleared this critical federal, um. Uh, highway, um, requirement, it's called the section four F determination has been made, so. The feds are done with their overview of this process, they they believe that we've followed the historic protocols properly. We need to document the history of this thing with a, I guess, a registered historian. And that's the next step and, um, we should move into design in twenty twenty five and and have the construction done. Um, probably midway through twenty twenty six, um. The long process for a very special bridge.
See, I know.
Special. Um. Yeah, other than that, uh, you know, there's a lot of concern about the speed on West Dryden Road and and we're pushing the county to push the state to. Reduce the the speed on West Dryden Road, not that that. You know, there was a fatality there at Sheldon Road in West Dryden in October. And, um. It's not so much the speed on West Dryden Road as much as people not stopping and and the county was quick in getting a. A blinking light up and I think the town put up an additional sign saying stop ahead and. Uh, to try and get people to stop when they get to West Dryden Road and and. I'm sure we all have a horror story about that, I know I do, where people just don't stop when they reach. And they try to just roll through and and it's dangerous, so. Um, lowering the speed limit kind of makes sense because they'll, they won't. Do anything about people who don't stop, but if there's impact, I guess, you know, won't be going seventy miles an hour like a lot of people do on that, um. I'll stop there.
Uh.
Oh, I did, I wanted to say one thing about our tax rate, so, uh, tax rate is going down twelve percent with this new budget. Tax levy is going up four point, uh, four percent. So, and the increased property value and and then, uh, you know, is undeniable, housing shortage and other drivers of increased assessments. Um, so the.
Yeah, thanks for the reassessment, my taxes went up almost two thousand dollars a year.
Your school taxes?
Yeah, those are, those are school taxes.
Both.
But did they cut your tax rate? You know, so.
Yes, it did, that's my point, it did cut my tax rate, but my taxes.
The school board, the school district cut your.
Oh, oh, I didn't, I didn't look at that to see if they.
Cause that that that's the thing, I mean, we have to be honest about this, like the, the, it because.
I think the tax rate, yes, I think the school board tax rate did go down slightly.
It went down.
I think it did go down slightly. But again, the only reason it went down is because. Because because the assessments went up so much.
But in the city of Ithaca, the tax rate and the levy went up.
Yeah.
And rather aggressively, I think about eight percent, um, so we we did cut our tax rate twelve percent, but of course the levy's going up four point four, but that's not. Crazy in terms.
I'll have to check it, no, I I I get it, my point is, is the assessments are what's, what's. Like for us, that's, the the assessments are what killed us because our assessments went up so much more than other people in the county.
You live in that fancy house.
Uh, yeah, my house is now.
It happened to me too, I think it happened to all of us, I hear you.
But, anyway.
What is the town tax rate now?
Four point six five per thousand.
The county went up too.
County went up, yeah, three percent.
Three percent, that's kind of reasonable.
Yeah, but.
With the levy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the levy, but their tax rate and the levy went up. Okay, that's different. Um, yeah, I kind of dunked on them on this.
Well, and I think what happened in Dryden.
I let the county folks know, we cut our tax rate.
I think what happened in Dryden, you know, because if you look across the county, right, they said tax, uh, assessments went up in average, if I forget what it was. Ten percent, now if everybody's assessment went up the same amount and your tax rate went down. Then. You really wouldn't pay anymore.
That's the perfect, that's the perfect model.
That's the perfect model, but. They, they didn't raise assessments. Across the entire county. Uh, and I think Dryden was impacted, I think assessments went up more in Dryden than they did in other areas.
Is that right?
And, but.
Spa assessment.
I mean, you know.
It's true, I'll, I'll, I won't tell you what my percentage was, but it was pretty big.
But anyway. The, uh, so. Alright, cool. That's good, uh, I was gonna ask, uh. The rail trail bridge.
I think Ray has the latest, and there's an another issue that needs to be sorted out that we thought was sorted out with the right away.
There's one more place where we don't have an easement on that trail, so I think the easier fix, since we know the easement procurement process is. Months of checking a lot of boxes of federal process. Uh, I think we're gonna make the design change, this is a fairly, just a few feet shift. So I think that's gonna be our fix, but that's still gonna be a process for.
Right.
Sign approval.
Okay. Alright, just curious. Well, thanks, Dan. Uh, minutes, I'm gonna cross that one off, we're not gonna talk about minutes tonight, because what I am going to do, I know we have two months worth. I will send out all the edited minutes to everyone. Joy can put them on the website as draft minutes if she wants to. And we can just approve them. Next month. If that sounds okay with people. Uh. And then the last thing on the agenda is planning board membership for twenty twenty five. Joe, uh, Joe's term is up, um. And my understanding is he he doesn't. Want to sign on for another s- seven years, Joe, thank you very much for. What you've done so far. Um. So we have one opening, uh, for a regular membership. Um. And I know we're gonna have one, at least one. Um, alternate. So we need, we need, assuming that. So right now, right, right now, Bill. So, Bill's not here tonight, so, but I'll have to reach out to him. Uh, Bill Griffin is an alternate who was only appointed for this year. So I need, you know, we could think about, you know, maybe. If he was interested. Um, yeah, you know, making him a full member. Um. I don't know if he's interested in that, I gotta, I'll I'll reach out to him.
We should ask him first.
I'll, I'll reach out to him and ask him, or he could, yeah, I don't know, I I gotta reach out to him and ask him before we do that. But in any event, we need, we need at least two people, whether whether it's one full board member and an alternate or two alternates. We need, you know, we're looking for two people.
Joe, do you want to be an alternate?
Joe, you're muted.
I'm giving it, um, serious thought.
He's, he's giving.
Oh, why don't you listen though next month?
Yeah, yeah.
I think.
Uh, so I mean, that is, that is an option that Joe has, yes, he he could, he could apply to be. Uh, an alternate, I don't know, Dan, would you let him do that or?
See, I think he's on that.
Totally. Kind of joking.
So you could find some members of the other sects to join this.
It would be nice.
Operation, not that there's any wrong.
Yeah.
The guys that we have, but.
Other color.
And then, uh, the the other thing that gets appointed annually with the planning board is the chair.
You were, you were already appointed for like six years.
I bet. Whatever, that's, I'm just saying, if you want to get rid of me, now's the time to do it.
Really?
Alright, so.
We'll think about it.
For for next month, we'll, we make the record, you know, next month, we'll we'll have to make a recommendation, probably make a recommendation.
So when we organize, we know.
So, so I make a recommendation that Ray calls the billboard people and puts a sign in there. Volunteers needed for town in Dryden.
Yeah.
Planning board, yeah.
Let's try and see if they're really faithful with that.
I think it's so many people pass that sign that aren't invested in Dryden, you know, I think that's their commuters to Ithaca.
Yeah, but volunteers needed.
Okay, uh, so anyway, so membership, we need, you know, we're gonna be, we need to find two people at least, right? And so, uh. You know, something to do and. Whatever. Alright. So we're good, thanks, we're done.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Yeah.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Say it. Not, well, but the fair is appointed every year.